Accounting interpretation. We further analyzed the random accounts to see that this was how they were applying the sales taxes to the franchise fee and the gross revenues. And we then checked with other REA distribution companies, specifically San Miguel REA, on their treatment, and it was the same as DMEA. I therefore would recommend to the board that there's no further action required here. This is standard accounting treatments, and they are doing it correctly.
Okay, thank you very much for all that work, Ross.
I thought maybe there might be some questions. I did have a chance to review this with the constituent who raised the issue. And I believe that individual understands and is accepting of this interpretation.
Thank you. All right, Bill?
Yeah, I had a question on that. How can you? It may be their standard accounting principles and everything like that, but how do we legitimately charge a tax on a fee? And the franchise fee is collected from the citizens on their purchase of electricity.
Correct.
And then, you know, and the sales taxes are usually added for tangible products. And this franchise fee is only a fee that we pay, that the citizens pay the town for the use of town property, town or private property. And so we're getting taxed twice. You know, we're having to pay the franchise fee for the DMEA to use our land. And then we pay that to the town, and then on top of that, we get taxed for it.
That's correct.
And I, the DMEA say what they want, but this is not a DMEA issue. It's a town of Peony issue. Do we in fact charge sales tax on non-tangible products?
I'm not a tax accountant, so I can't answer that question. I just pursue this as related to DMEA's treatment of the franchise fee and its inclusion in the gross revenue definition, which in fact is then applied with the sales taxes that the town imposes.
But it's really not a DMEA question. It is a town of Peony question because the town, the DMEA is merely collecting the franchise fee on our behalf, and then they're adding it back in. I think the question becomes, does a town of Peony charge taxes on products other than tangible products? And so regardless of what DMEA does, it's a town of Peony question. And
The town of Peony, in its franchise agreement with DMEA, passes the franchise fee. The state of Colorado and the state constitution precludes the town from applying a franchise fee to anything other than within their town boundaries. I don't know where the board would want to go with that. You would be reducing the revenue generated by the franchise fee if you decided to tell the DMEA that we will no longer impose a franchise fee for your use of the public streets, thoroughfares, and rights away.
I'm not saying that, Ross. I'm saying that they need to move the calculation of the total bill. They need to move the charge for the sales tax to the other side of the equation before they add the franchise fee in. And it's strictly a town of Peony question. Do we collect sales tax on stuff that is non-tangible? And I don't think that franchise fee is tangible. And I would like to hear what Mr. Nerlin has to say about it and have him take a close look at the reading of our sales tax enactment and see if it in fact covers that franchise fee. You know, here's part of how other people do it and how they recommend to do it. It's the money the town collects, and it was enacted by the town ordinances. So it's nothing to do with DMEA.
Well, DMEA charges it on their bills for the benefit of the town. If the town doesn't want them to do that, I'm sure that we could renegotiate the franchise to eliminate the franchise fee.
No, it's a matter of how they calculate the sales tax. The sales tax should be on the gross revenue of the products delivered to the citizens. And then the franchise fee added in. I'm not talking about doing away with the franchise fees. I'm just talking about how they calculate the total sales tax due.
Then I think we, at your direction, I would be happy to discuss this with Mr. Nerlin and that their interpretation of gross revenue and the fact that gross revenue includes the franchise fee, we can pursue that.
Well, I would like to see that you discuss that with Mr. Nerlin to determine if in fact they should be taxing our franchise fee. I'm not talking about getting rid of the franchise fee.
I understand.
But it's merely how they calculate it. The sales tax is a calculated on
Gross revenue.
Well, then I think that we need to examine the conflict between gross revenue and sales tax, the, how they charge them. So anyway, I guess we can have
Would the board like me to pursue that with Mr. Nerlin?
I move that we have Treasury King pursue the sales tax on the sales tax charged on the franchise fee with Mr. Nerlin.
Do we have a second on that motion? Okay, seeing none, the motion dies for a last second. Michelle?
I wonder if we could amend the motion to make the question a little more general and not specific to DMEA, but I would be interested in in seeing how our sales tax should be calculated and make sure people who are charging sales tax in the town of Peony have that information as well.
Well, I'd be happy to amend my motion because it's not just, it is not really to DMEA. It's all of the companies we charge a franchise fee to.
This is also applicable to Black Hills, Elevate, TDS, all of them.
Well, it's a general question, not associated with any particular company.
Okay.
Question is, are we allowed in our ordinance to collect sales tax on franchise fees?
All right, so my understanding of what's going on here is that, do you want to amend your motion? Or do you want to just keep it as a general motion to? Well, we can't. I mean, that motion has failed. So unless we amend the motion itself.
I'll make a new motion that the town attorney and Mr. King get together and to analyze our charging of sales tax on franchise fees regardless of who it is and to approach it at a higher level in any particular company. Does that help you, Michelle?
Okay. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Dave, you had your hand up.
Yeah, I was hoping to talk before the motion was made. I noticed that Cindy had been raising her hand but was not recognized, Madam Chairman.
We're gonna get it, yeah. Karen?
Isn't it the state that determines what is taxable? I know like certain rentals are taxable. You don't get to keep whatever you're renting, but it's a use tax, but that comes under the sales tax law. And so maybe they have, the state has determined that franchise fees are taxable. And I think that's maybe a state thing. I don't know if that's what they've determined, but maybe it is.
Okay, thank you, Karen. Cindy, did you have something to say?
I was just gonna say what Karen just said. The state, the Department of Revenue is the one that determines what items are taxable. And we are not home rule. We don't collect our own sales tax. Therefore, it is, that is through Department of Revenue.
Bill?
I would certainly recommend that Treasury, if this motion is voted in, that Treasury King and Mr. Nerlin examine that. I mean, I think that that's the information that would answer the questions and certainly go along with that.
Okay.
Mr. Bear, I understand your direction and the direction of your motion, and I would be happy to do that on the behalf of the board.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second. Any more discussion from the board? Seeing none, we have a hand up in the audience. Suzanne?
Okay, so, um, this is Suzanne Watson. And I was concerned by this, and I brought it forward. And I guess I was looking at the town ordinances, and I was wondering, what good are the town ordinances if we don't follow them? And I'm wondering if DMEA has looked at our town ordinance? Because it's the ordinance, it's the law that gives them the ability to use the franchise. The ordinance for TES is different for their franchise. The ordinance for Charter is different, and the ordinance for Black Hills is different. They enact the franchise all differently, and I haven't compared them all. But specific to the DMEA ordinance, it says, it's five dash two dash fifty. And it says, "The company shall collect and pay to the town of a sum of three percent of its annual gross revenue derived from the sale of electricity to residents, excluding industrial customers," which I'd like to know who they are. And is DMEA charging people industrial zones franchise fees too? Because is that what this ordinance means? And then it says, "within the corporate limits of the town." But here it's saying that "shall collect and pay to the town a sum of three percent of its gross annual gross revenue." So to me, it doesn't sound like that franchise fee is part of the gross revenue. You don't have a gross revenue, charge three percent to it, and then make a new gross revenue. This is the gross revenue that you take the franchise fee out of. The franchise fee is not part of the gross revenue. And then furthermore, it says, "The company shall collect and pay to the town a sum of three percent." Wait, I already said that. Anyway, oh yeah, so DMEA explains it as, "It is set by your town elected officials, and the DMEA collects it on your town's behalf and remits it back to your town." So they're not, they're not collecting it as part of that. They're doing Peony a service, and they're collecting the three percent fee for the town and giving it back to the town. It's not part of their gross revenue. So I think there's some wording here that, to me, is rather, it speaks to the fact that I don't think it should be charged as sales tax on top of that. And you know, when this is all said and done, and if DMEA comes out with a statement as to how they continue to charge this, I will submit a form to the state at that point and file an official complaint. And I would need a letter from DMEA to be able to do that with their explanation of why they think this can be charged as a tax. So hopefully you can refer to our ordinances, not just the DMEA contract, but our ordinances, because they are the laws that we have to follow and the town and DMEA has to follow. Thank you.
Okay. We have a motion and a second on the table. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, we have one nay, and that is Dave Knutson. All right, that motion passes. Thank you. Mr. King, we look forward to your report.
Thank you. I would also like to report to the board that we reviewed and released payroll. We've reviewed dispersments for the Finance and Personnel Committee and recommend approval. Madam Mayor, that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. All right, let's move on with dispersments. Do I hear a motion?
Dave?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve a transfer to Summit in the amount of $150,000. We approve accounts payable in the amount of $54,094.18. That we approve the Amco bond payment due of $74,750. We approve credit card charges to Chase of $3,0932. That we approve the Norris retirement of $1,0680. We approve a transfer to payroll of $21,766.23. And we approve payroll taxes of $24,825.40. I'm not done yet. That we also approve a transfer from an internal grant of $33,041.88. And a second transfer of $454.96. And transfer to Summit that total of $33,521.84. And that concludes my motion.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, would trustee Knutson also approve payroll direct deposit?
Oh, I'm sorry, I missed that, Ross. Thank you for that. And a payroll direct deposit of $21,766.23. As I said last time, Karen Budinger will probably fire me from this job.
I think you did. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, discussion from the board. Michelle?
Yeah, I have a few questions on dispersments. The first one for the Ellen Hansen Center kitchen remodel, was that a grant funded project? I'm just trying to remember how that happened. I think it was.
Yes, it's a grant and a match from the town.
Okay, thank you. The, I noticed that the vehicle expenses were kind of high this month. Around $3,000, I think. That's fuel and maintenance costs. And I'm wondering if we have annual maintenance that played into that? Or if we had vehicles that were just not doing well?
I meant to actually go and get a breakdown for you today, but today got away from me. I can let you know that there's been a lot of repairs going into our standard truck for plowing and sanding when we have snow, as well as there was some tire and vehicle repair to one of the police department vehicles as well.
Okay. And then the park Wi-Fi, I'm not sure if that's the one, the project that we were just talking about most recently in the last few meetings, or if that's a separate thing?
This one's separate. This park Wi-Fi is for, it was part of the conversation we'd had early on after the pandemic began about supporting different entities that were trying to use Pulis Park. And so that's the installation of the antenna on Town Hall to shoot Wi-Fi accessibility over to Pulis Park.
Okay, thank you. And sorry, just a couple more. Is it all right if I keep going?
Sure.
Okay, the Ranger repair. We just had a bunch of Ranger repairs done last November. So I just wanted to see if something new came up or if this is something that might be under warranty.
Those are actually the back ordered parts. When I gave that report about the Ranger repair at the end of last year, there was a notation that some of the parts were on back order and that we wouldn't be billed for them until those parts came in. And that's what that was.
Okay, so it's related to the same work?
Yes.
And then on the credit card, there are a bunch of PayPal and eBay charges. I believe from past conversations, that's related to public safety, and it's just the most, the least expensive way to get what we need, but I wanted to confirm that.
That is correct. It was the new, I believe, some lights and sirens for the new police department vehicle. And also for awareness with dispersments. We, I did also let Finance and Personnel know that with a modification to our Amazon account that the town has for Amazon business, Amazon will start, will be starting to invoice instead of being paid for through the credit card.
That's great. Okay, and just one last one. It looks like somebody or some people went to an event in Littleton. I just wanted to find out what that was.
Yes, that was a defensive tactics instructor class for the police department that Sergeant O'Neal attended.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions from the board? All right, seeing none, anything from the audience? All right, seeing none, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, that motion carries. All right, let's move on to regular business and the North Fork EMS Balance and Fitness Program Grant Letter of Support. Do we have somebody from that organization that would like to talk to us about this?
I'm not sure if we have anyone in attendance. They were going to try, but our meeting coincides with their meeting. So it was unlikely that, but I did speak with Kathy and included the project summary. There's no financial commitment or anything. This is just a letter of support from the town for them to apply for a grant to offer some activities in Peony Hotchkiss Crawford for our elderly population. If that's the correct way to say it.
Questions from the board? Yes, Dave?
I checked in with the North Fork Senior Connections. They offered a similar class. Actually, I can't say it's similar. The class they offered was funded by Region 10 and actually took a different approach. This was according to Linda Mccone, and she said that this sale program actually originated in the Pacific Northwest, and it was well received. And it's an ongoing program that lasts over a year, and it's excellent. It's based on best practices and evidence-based practices for the elderly population. The only concern I had about it, and I can't get an answer for that, is how are these classes going to be conducted during COVID? Because at least in the Pacific Northwest, they are canceling those classes until it's clear. So that remains a question.
All right, any other comments from the board? Yes, Karen?
I'm assuming that the, you know, that they're just applying for the grant to get, you know, instructor training and this sort of thing. And this would be, by the time they get through all of that, maybe the COVID restrictions will be raised. It'd be summertime before this is done.
Could be, could very well be. Any other comments from the board? Yes, Kim?
During several years when I was injured, I learned a lot about balance. Wasn't a senior at the time, but I'm out there. And there's a lot of really strong evidence that balancing and strengthening before and after injuries just, it just is so worth it. There's a lot of evidence out there that all of us could benefit from improving our balance. I would like to move that we improve, that we approve the letter of support for the Balance and Fitness Program Grant Letter for North Fork EMS.
All right, do I hear a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Okay, I see none. Anything from the public? Okay, I see none. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, that motion carries. Let's move on to the Western Slope Congressional Conservation Center. Tanya, you are up again. Welcome.
Hi, all. Thank you. And we can have a conversation too. We just happen to be a conservation center, that's all. So I submitted a letter in the packet, and I hope you guys have
You cut out. Tanya? Oh my goodness, she went away.
She's coming back.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I think my Zoom just dropped me.
You were being, you were being given permissions to be able to share screen and anything if you needed to. I apologize that I interrupted you.
Oh, great. No worries. Yeah, so I submitted a letter that we are hoping the town of Peony might, might feel free to sign on to and send to our senators, John Hickenlooper and Michael Bennett in DC, that just supports the sort of conservation direction that this administration is going on, but does call to attention that, you know, the executive orders that have come from the Biden administration put a pause on all new oil and gas leases, which is great, but there's still no permanent solutions, and there's no permanent solutions proposed. So just sort of a letter from the town that says that we're still looking for permanent protections against oil and gas here in the North Fork Valley. And we're still, you know, waiting to hear how the resource management plan lawsuits pan out. And we're, you know, the Western Slope Conservation Center is a litigant. In one of the lawsuits, the state of Colorado has also filed suit against the resource management plan. And then there's another pod in a lawsuit that includes Citizens for a Healthy Community. And so while the Comptadre Field Office Resource Management Plan has been finalized, and there is a record of decision, I think it's still important for our senators to hear input, local voices. And I think the voice from the town of Peony would be a really important voice for them to hear, to know that we're still here and we're still concerned, and we're still seeking permanent protections.
Hey, thank you very much, Tanya. Do you have questions for Tanya from the board? Okay, seeing none. Shall we put a motion on the table then? Dave?
Yes, I'd like to move that we approve the letter proposed dated February 9th to the Colorado senators.
Thank you. All right, we have a second. All right, further discussion from the board? All right, seeing none, anything from the public? Yes, Thomas?
Just a typo in that first paragraph, there's a U, capital U at the end of it.
Yeah.
Except please send it up.
Yes. Thank you, Thomas. Yeah, I had that highlighted as well. Okay. All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? I'm sorry, what?
Nay.
Thank you, Bill. All right, we have one opposed, and that's Bill Bear. All right, that motion carries. Tanya, I hope we can get a letter back from you that doesn't have the U in the paragraph, and then I'll be happy to sign it for you.
We'll take the U out of it.
Thank you very much. All right, thank you very much, Tanya. All right, moving on. We have the work session, regular meeting schedules. All right. All right, well, we have a proposal. I had a couple of articles that I put in for everyone to review, and then Michelle put in a possible meeting format. So Michelle, would you like to deal with your format? And then we can move on to discussion.
Sure. So I was really kind of excited about Dave's suggestion of having one, almost a work session or a discussion meeting per month, and then a second that would be more focused on the business side. So I just was thinking through it and put together an idea of one way we could approach that. My hope would be to just streamline the process a little bit on how things move from being discussed to board action and make that efficient for the board and also clear for the public in terms of where discussions, how they, how something becomes a discussion, and then how that discussion becomes a potential point of action. So just an idea, I don't think there's one right way to run a meeting, but something to consider. But I did notice that Corinne recommended in the packet that we hold off on making any major changes until we have in-person meetings, and I would support that. I think Zoom is hard enough without trying to add a radical change to the way we run our meetings.
Thank you, Michelle. Anybody else want to chime in? Yes, Dave?
I would agree with what Michelle just said. I totally think that the recommendations by our town manager are very well thought out and wise that right now isn't the time to make that change. But I did want to add a comment. I've been thinking about this further, and one thing that I feel restrained on is when a public, when a person from the public makes a comment under our current rules of procedure, I cannot at least respond in an active listening way to show that I've understood what they said, because there's a discouragement for me to respond to the public. And so, for instance, using Suzanne. So Suzanne, you're really concerned about the way those taxes are imposed would be a response. And that's one thing I've been thinking about this week as I thought about the meeting is, I think it would be helpful for us as trustees to be able to respond I think it would be helpful for us as trustees to be able to respond to show the public that we've at least understood the comment they made, or at least grasp it, because that's one thing that's really not a part of our meeting. And I think one of the reasons you get into this back and forth so much with people is that they don't feel heard. So I just want to add that as a point, but that, that's my latest thinking. Thank you for bearing with me.
Thank you. Other comments? Okay, I personally, thank you, Michelle, for putting this proposal together. My, I disagree that I think this will streamline meetings. I actually think we are doubling our workload since every agenda item will have to be discussed twice, which means you will get half as much work done in twice as much time. I think it doesn't take into account things like emergency things that come up between meetings that we need to deal with. Are we going to be switching back and forth between formats? To do that, which would make it incredibly confusing for everybody involved. And then there are all the non-contemptious items that really don't need discussions, like the millet and things like that, which are just a slam dunk. And if we don't put it in the work session, then can we put it in the other session? And it's still, it's going to be complex. It's going to be confusing. There's nobody else who does this. Nobody. I have searched. I have looked at local towns, and nobody does this. Because again, having to discuss everything twice is not an efficient use of town time, and it's going to take things like ordinances twice as long to get put through. It's going to take bid reviews twice as long to go through. This is not the way to efficiently operate a government. And then, yeah, and as far as being able to show people that we're listening, we make eye contact with them. We don't look down at our papers and read things. We look at them. We nod. You can do lots of non-verbal communication without ever saying a word to that person that shows that, yes, you are listening to what they're saying and you're acknowledging them. So I don't think that a discussion is going to be the way to go with this. So that's mine. We can take this up again when we get back to open session. In the meantime, Dave?
Metamere, I'd like to, I don't know if it needs a motion. I think we could just table this for now. You know, because I really think that the thinking of our town administrators is well thought out.
Yeah, I would agree.
I did notice, though, that we did not put on the agenda another item, and that was how we put our names on letters.
Beau is going to address that one.
Okay, that's why it's not there then. Thank you.
Corinne told us that in her notes and also at the beginning of the meeting.
Thank you. Okay.
All right. Suzanne, I'll give you three minutes to comment on this.
Okay, if someone else wanted to comment first, that'll be fine, but I didn't want to lose my chance here. I wanted to suggest, I appreciate you guys looking at this, and I do agree, it's a difficult one to, it almost is a way more informal context, like a work session, that you want to maybe put ideas forward. But I appreciated the Jurassic Parliament information you included in the packet. But what I didn't point to you, and maybe I'll send this to you, Dave, specifically, I have to dig it out. There's a video that Anne McFarlane does, and she talks about the round robin. Maybe on some topics, if there is going to be a lot of concern or wanting to comment, you poll people first. You have a chance to make one comment before someone makes a motion, just to see where people are at. And I suppose you could do that with the audience as well as the board members. So on certain issues, maybe that's a way to let people be heard a little bit more. But that being said, we kind of have a good mechanism already in Resolution 2017-10, which is the resolution that has, was adopted by the board. We should be following it. And it has to do with the business, how we conduct business during the meetings. And our resolution says that we put unfinished business on the agenda, and then we put new business on the agenda. And unfinished business is kind of wrapping up something that was done at a prior meeting. So in a way, you are having that second meeting this way. The new business is new stuff that's on the agenda. It might be just presented at that meeting and maybe not voted on yet. So we do have this mechanism, but for some reason, it's just been abandoned. And I'm not sure what the process of it is just to abandon a resolution. I thought that would be a board vote that we'd have to change the resolution to change the way we hold meetings. But it's just been changed over the last three meetings. Things have been listed differently on the agenda, and I, I think it's to the detriment of our meetings. I believe we have something here that we need to look at and perhaps correct. And then, you know, take this meeting topic up later when we do have a chance to meet publicly in a room together. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, moving on, Thomas?
Thank you. A couple of things, and I understand that this is tabled, I guess, to a certain time or whenever we can meet face to face. So this is just general comments. I think that perhaps the importance of local government is not recognized by the current board and mayor. I personally think that what happens here is absolutely critical to a functioning America. And an absolutely critical part of what we do here is public input, public participation. And every time that you take a step that inhibits or discourages public participation, I think you are doing harm to the way that America works in general. And I personally, I voted for you, Mayor Bachmann, because I, I thought that Bill Bruner would basically create a very contentious and hostile atmosphere based on how I've seen him interact in meetings in the, in the past, that he wouldn't listen to people. And the fact that I'm seeing you continue to not listen to people makes me wonder if I will vote for you again.
Okay, thank you, Thomas. All right, this has been tabled, so let's move on. Did you have something to say, Dave? No. Okay. Let's move on to the consent agenda. All right. Can I have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
Motion to accept the consent.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion on this? All right, seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
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 opposed? All right, that passes. Next up is the mayor's report. I did include a written report. I think Suzanne had a question about that. I will be happy to answer. But first, let's do the board. Does any board member have a question about my report? Yes, Dave?
I was curious about the governor's vaccine update because it didn't seem realistic, like 90% of healthcare workers have received the second dose, and 100% of skilled nursing facilities have been vaccinated. It just didn't seem like it was in touch with reality.
Well, that's what the state, oops, sorry, epidemiologists told us. That's what the, that's what I got from the horse's mouth, as it were. So if you want to contend their numbers, I think you need to go talk to them. Any other questions? All right, Suzanne, did you have a question? I guess not. All right, yes?
She does have her hand up, mayor. She might just be having difficulty getting unmuted.
Okay.
Hello, sorry. That, this is exactly what I was going to ask. So if we're at the yellow threat level, at what time might we be looking at having town meetings again in, at town hall? This trying to push buttons to get unmuted, that's really cumbersome. But I know we don't want to rush it, but at the same time, I'm just wondering, how are we going to be handling the new, the new situation here with the reducing restrictions? Or the relaxing them a little, relaxing them a little bit?
Well, to my understanding, the last time we had meetings, we were in the green. And we are, we are not down to summer levels yet. And it's probably going to be, we have Super Bowl and Super Bowl parties, so that's going to bump up our numbers again. So I would say, I would guess that we will be moving into regular face-to-face meetings. I would say the earliest, the very earliest would be the end of March, and then into April. But my is wait until, until we get into the green again before we move in that.
Thank you. I found it interesting. The school is having a big meeting tomorrow. That's sort of wild.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Masks are required to attend.
All right, next up, if there are no other questions? All right, committee reports, finance and personnel, Dave?
Our next meeting will be tomorrow morning at nine o'clock, where we'll be signing checks. We've set a special meeting for Wednesday, the 24th at 9:00 AM. We're going to look at some of the salary survey things, some policies, including PTO and reserves. And also, Michelle, we've been so late on looking at your budget notes, but we're finally going to get to that. So that's on the agenda for Wednesday, 2/24. That'll be February 24th at 9:00 AM, Town Hall. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Government affairs? Public safety, Michelle, Mick?
Yeah, so we've met yesterday and went over a number of issues. The first is ADUs, which we brought before the board. Beau, Attorney Nerlin is working on draft ordinance on that, and we're hoping to see that at the next meeting. We talked about food trucks, and there will be an ordinance coming before the board on that as well, mainly to clarify what the current requirements are for food trucks, and then also to have a conversation about how we want to handle them during special events, particularly events that might be on Grand Avenue. So that'll be coming to the board soon. We're also working on how we're going to tackle short-term rentals. We have a draft survey for that, and we will, we're planning to bring the questions for the draft survey to the board for review at the next meeting. And following that, the survey will go out to the public so that we can get more feedback on how the community feels about that.
Okay. Thank you.
And I just want to comment pop up about use tax. I'm not sure if that's related to the GAPS committee.
Yeah, I don't know. I guess maybe he was asking us to see if we would do a use tax. All right, public works, utilities, facilities. Bill, Tammy? Bill, you're still muted if you're talking.
I say that we have not had a meeting since last month, or maybe even scheduled for Thursday, I believe. So further updated the next meeting.
Thursday, 9:00?
Okay. Yes, Karen?
This is actually for Michelle and that committee. I mean, how are we doing on the marijuana regulations? We got Corinne?
Corinne.
It will be on the next agenda. We've had two really good meetings. We actually have another one scheduled, but we'll probably delay until next week. Right now, the ordinance with some questions, specific questions have been sent, has been sent over to the marijuana enforcement division for the state to review and make sure that everything in there is current, up to date. And there was also a question about distance restrictions and whether or not a community can be less restrictive when it comes to medicinal use versus commercial recreational use.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, Thomas, you have your hand up.
Yes, this is definitely regarding public utilities. And my function on the water advisory committee, I have a couple of quick questions for the board. The first is hopefully is pretty easy. I and possibly some of the other members would like to acquire as much data as we can in our initial setup and kind of investigation period. And some, a lot of that data would be the actual meter and billing data for water bills. Now, this would be private, you know, based on the individual identifiable information. But I was wondering if the board would approve releasing water bills to the committee that have been anonymized? And if not, if you could maybe want to talk with Mr. Nerlin about it and see if a cora request or process would be appropriate. And my second question, and I guess neither of these needs an answer right now, but something to think about possibly for the next meeting would be basically what the board sees as long-term trends or goals, I guess, as far as the overall population change and density that you would like to see in Peonia? And so that we can make our plans, models, and processes align with those, because basically we don't have any any input. We have, I guess, the town plan is coming up soon. The, I don't know exactly what state that's in, but something to think about for the next meeting maybe is like, you know, where each of you or all of you together possibly think we should be, or what we should plan for realistically in the near and distant future. Thanks.
Thank you, Thomas. Interesting points we need to think about, but definitely we need to, part of the master plan. I mean, it has to go to the community as well, and what the community thinks about what we're doing. So that will be part of that process. All right. And finally, tree board, Tammy?
Okay, nothing new to report. However, the State Forest Service Inventory and Assessment Draft has been received by the town. The tree board hopes to start reviewing that later this week. So stay tuned on that. And just again, an invitation for everybody to check out the, the tree board website. Tree board member John Valentine has put a lot of work into that, and there is a lot of information on there. And it's, it's still a work in progress, but he has really put a lot of time on it, into it. So it is peonytreeboard.org. And also just to follow up real quickly on Thomas's comments, not necessarily on his comments, but certainly on the Advisory Water Committee, we are meeting the fourth Wednesday of the month. This month's meeting is going to be at 6:00 PM. We are looking to collect, I guess, a shopping list of what each advisory committee member wants to see. We're going to start doing some some, I'm having trouble thinking here. Let's see. Just start identifying and setting priorities for what we want to do and what we want to help the town with in the coming months and years. And so that'll be a big topic on our next meeting, and we hope that you all can or that more people could be at that meeting. We, I think we had, we were on Zoom, and I think we had three members of the public. So it'd be nice to get more members of the public to please join our meetings. And it would be nice, too, if we could start putting this after the first of March, putting a report for this committee on the agenda. So.
That's all I have.
Thank you, Tammy. Yes, Bill?
Just a question on the tree board and the following up on the comment that the people that are pruning trees in Peonia maybe need some further additional training. Has anything happened with that? If you're aware?
No, but that's, that's definitely one of the things we're looking at for this year is coming up with some standardized way of pruning and even looking at Grand Junction. The city of Grand Junction is doing some really remarkable stuff with their trees. Anybody who prunes their trees has to be a certified arborist. The Grand Junction Sentinel just came out with a couple of articles about their, their planting and how they're growing their trees. Um, they're planting and how they're growing their own plants now to put in their planters and they are. Growing their own trees, their own seedlings to put in parks and they're doing some amazing stuff for, so we're actually looking at the city of Grand Junction right now. As um, as a model for what we, you know, what we dream of seeing with um, our trees in the future. Um, the. Oh, the Tree City USA is having a series of um. Online, oh, I don't know what you call them. Meetings, I guess, presentations that uh, Chair, uh, Treeboard Chair Paula Martin is attending two of them and I'll be attending the third one. Those are um, being covered over a period of three weeks. We're hoping to get a lot more information on that and other things about. What we can do for our trees to protect our trees, to keep them healthy in the future. So um. Those we hope to bring back to the board probably sometime in March, bring some reports back in March or April to the board. I hope that's not too much information and that answers your question.
Okay, thank you very much, Tammy. Okay, we have a hand up. I believe it's Paige.
Hi, the Paige Smith at two fifteen Delta and I just had a question and a compliment. I was, the question is, is, are the tree board meetings open to the public? And the compliment is that I really appreciated all the information that you've posted about trees and ways to plan them, et cetera. For the tree board on the town of Payonia webpage.
Um, yes, they are open to the public and we do those via Zoom, obviously, and the next one is uh, February twenty fourth at five PM. And I don't know if that's um, Corinne, if that's something we could um. Post on the website. Um, what would be the best way to advertise those meetings?
I can put it on the town calendar on the town's website.
Okay, that'd be great. So um, February twenty fourth at five PM. That's the next one.
Thank you very much, Tammy. All right. There is nothing else. We have reached the end of our agenda and. I call this meeting adjourned. Thank you, everyone, public and private.
Mayor, you have another hand up out there. I'm just. The issue is, I'm, hold on just one moment. I'm having to promote our community member so that. I think he'll be able to speak. He has an older Zoom version, so it might not work. Let's see.
He's there.
Oh, there he is.
Hey, I have a question for you about the tree board. Do they have available through the county or the town replacement trees? I had a really nice hedge last summer of, of Dutch Elms that, that sort of blocked a really unsightly view that Ken Knight left me. And the county came through and killed the Dutch Elms and I, I appreciate that. But is there somewhere I could go to get some sort of a replacement to plant? To recreate that hedge?
Not that I know of, Corinne. Um, I mean, that's something we're looking at in the future. If we do cut down trees, if we do have to take out trees, we would be replacing them. But as far as, I don't know, Corinne, do you have anything?
I know.
Anything with the now?
I know that DMEA does a tree, they do some free trees. Um, you have to get on top of that right at the beginning though, so you might want to try to get a hold of them right away. Um, I, um, that's the only entity I know of right off the top of my head, but I'm definitely willing to do a post out to. Um, other communities and see if I can get any information and share it if I find any.
I sure appreciate it. Thank you, guys.
Okay, I think the Forest Service also gives away free trees at some point in the year and I don't remember when that was, maybe early spring. But that would be another place to look, James.
Thank you, guys.
All right. All right.
You, you have more hands up.
Two, uh, three, seven, nine, I can't see the rest of the number.
Eight, four, eight, four.
Whoever is that number, you're on.
Oh, thank you. Hi, I'm just figuring that out. Um, this is Christina Patterson. I just wanted to thank everybody that was involved with the water meeting, um, the chair, Tammy. And uh, Thomas, thank you so much. It went so well and it was very heartening. To have you guys in place now. I also wondered if um, all the meetings could be, um, are they open? All the board meetings, are they all open to the public? And if so, can they be also noted on the calendar?
Are you talking about all the committee meetings?
Correct. Thank you.
So I have been putting the ones on the um, calendar that have uh, stated that they were public meetings. Some of the meetings, I don't get enough time, uh, like when they set, when they're going to do check signing. Because that happens right before the board meeting and so it's impossible for me to get that on the calendar. But um, any other, uh, as we have our other committee meetings, I will check with them to find out if they want those to be public meetings. And if so, I'll start adding them to the calendar as well.
Okay, Anne?
Thank you.
Dave?
I just wanted to thank uh, the nu- number of people from the public that attend our meetings. Um, we heard from another town that no one ever goes to their meetings and they kind of work in a vacuum and. I just want to say that I, and I'm sure that my fellow board members agree that it's really great to have the public participation that we have. Thank you so much.
Okay, Suzanne?
Hi, did you call me?
Your hand.
Hello? Yeah, hi, um, hopefully I'm not talking over someone. I didn't hear you, Mary. I, I wanted to say to um, um. The James, perhaps, you know, the Arbor Day Foundation has a really low cost or free tree giveaway that they do. I don't know if there are very many. But since the Tree City USA is coordinated by the Arbor Day Foundation, I'm wondering if there's some kind of a partnership. That could happen between them and the trees. The trees they offer about, they're about a foot tall. They're not very big. So they really have to be babied, but that, that might be a source of really inexpensive or free trees. And the other suggestion is whatever town, um, you know, public attends, you should look at how they run their meetings. And perhaps that's the model you should adopt. Um, then you could get meetings done really fast. But thank you. Thanks for listening to us. I do appreciate that.
Well, you know, as Dave said, having public input is important to this town and we have always. Gone bent over backwards and gone way beyond what other communities do to make sure that the public is heard. Most public meetings, do you get your section at the beginning and nobody gets to speak aside from that? I think it's wonderful that we do have time to do this and we do listen to you and we change our minds sometimes because of what you guys say. So thank you to everyone and I have been heartened that more people show up on Zoom than ever walked into the meetings at night and I can understand it. You can do it and thank you for coming. All right, on that note, I'm adjourning this meeting. Thank you, everyone. Have a lovely evening.
Goodbye.
Thank you, Tanya, for your message to have a restful evening.